Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:30. And I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it's good to see all of our citizens and friends and relatives here this evening. This meeting is both in person and online, and people can also watch us on burnsvillemn.gov/meetings or on Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. The first item on the agenda is our announcement, and our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. And we also have three proclamations this evening and also recognitions of students. So our upcoming meetings are, regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, June 3rd at 5:30 PM, and Tuesday, June 17th at 5:30 PM. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, June 10th at 5:30 PM, and a budget work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, June 10th at 6:30 PM. We have special work sessions scheduled to interview candidates for our commissions, and that's Tuesday, May 27th at 4:30 PM, and Tuesday, May 29th at 5:30 PM. Those work sessions are going to be in Conference Room D. All meetings of the city council are held here in the council chambers unless I announce a different location for the meeting. So now, it's my great honor and privilege to read the three proclamations and present it. So the way that it's going to go tonight, because we have three proclamations, and the first one is going to be for EMS Week, I will present that, we'll take pictures for EMS, and then we will have a proclamation for our Police City Hall Project groundbreaking. I will present that, and then we'll take pictures for that. And then the last one is going to be one that's going to involve a lot of folks, and it's going to take some time, and we're very happy to do this. And this is our Military Appreciation Week, and where we are honoring students who have chosen the military as their career. So I'm going to start, and that's... So our first proclamation is for Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical service are a vital public service, and the members of the Burnsville Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care of those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The emergency medical service system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of the Burnsville Fire engage in specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the 51st anniversary of EMS Week's theme is "We Care for Everyone." And it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of our emergency medical provider, Burnsville Fire, by designating and celebrating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim in the City of Burnsville, the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Service EMS Week proclaimed this 20th day of May, 2025. And our chief and Assistant Fire Chief is receiving this. Thank you so much, and everybody. I'm trying to make sure that...
She's not letting me hide behind that.
Can you, can you see?
Yep.
Can you see Jenny too?
Yep.
I mean, because they're trying to hide.
I got you, I got you.
Thank you. The next proclamation is for Police City Hall Project Groundbreaking. Whereas, the City of Burnsville is committed to delivering exceptional service to our residents, businesses, and visitors through facilities that reflect the values of accessibility, safety, and community connection. And whereas, the current Burnsville Police and City Hall facility constructed in 1988 no longer meets the evolving needs of a growing and diverse community, nor the space demands of modern city service and public safety operations. And whereas, the Burnsville City Council has prioritized investment in infrastructure that supports transparency, wellness, innovation, and community engagement. And whereas this transformative project will provide welcoming and inclusive spaces for the public, improved access to city service, enhanced training and wellness facility for our police department. And whereas this project represents more than a building, it is a symbol of Burnsville's values and our commitment to the future, to community trust, and to those who serve and protect. And whereas the groundbreaking of this facility marks a historic milestone for the City of Burnsville and its residents, and honors years of planning, collaboration, and vision. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim, May 22nd, 2025, as Police City Hall Project Groundbreaking Day in the City of Burnsville, and encourages all residents, businesses, staff, and partners to celebrate this milestone project and the bold community-centered future it represents. A groundbreaking celebration will be held on May 22nd, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM with a program starting at 5:30 PM at City Hall. Proclaim this 20th day of May, 2025. And Garrett is going to be receiving this. Garret Beck is the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities. So congratulations. And I think I see Police Chief, Fire Chief, and everybody else that's on the Facilities team. Yeah, let's see. Wait a minute. There we go. Can you see everybody?
Almost. Garrett's just right behind your head, so.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. And the last proclamation, and this is when, after I read the proclamation and present it, then retired Colonel Mike is going to come and present all of the, and recognize all of the students. So this proclamation is Military Appreciation Week, honoring students serving their country. Whereas, the United States military supports the freedom upon which our country was founded. And entering in the military is a noble and important career choice. Over 2.8 million people serve in the active and reserve branches of the military. And whereas, the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Organization is a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to supporting our nation's military. And whereas, the Glenn C. Turner VFW Post 5833 is a nonprofit veterans' service organization that supports veterans, service members, and their families. And the Burnsville American Legion Post 1700 provides community and youth programs and strengthens service for those who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. And whereas, the Burnsville and Savage communities have partnered with the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Organization since 2016 to honor students who have made a commitment to enter military service. And now therefore, I, Elizabeth Kouts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim, May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Military Appreciation Week, with a special emphasis on students who have selected careers in the military, and urge my fellow citizens to observe this period by thanking our young people in our community who have chosen to enter the military profession in support of our freedom, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And I present this now to retired Colonel Huddleston. Okay, and here you are, and then I turn it over to you.
You gotta stay up here.
Yes, absolutely. And I think we need, is she here? A savage mayor?
Yeah, she's not here. But what you call it's gonna... Officer, Officer Sedenko.
You want me to come up now or wait?
You gotta come right over here. Yep. You didn't know you were gonna do this, did you? Well, welcome. And Vince, you were almost late, so welcome.
Almost.
Yeah. Good evening, my name is Mike Huddleston, and my wife and I are the volunteer coordinators for the Burnsville Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. We have come before the city council every year since 2016 to thank students for serving our community, state, and country by choosing to serve in the military. To date, we have recognized over 120 students, and then tonight, there's nine of you that are here with us tonight. I'd like to begin by addressing the students gathered here. Service above, and just talk about service above self is more than just a motto, it's a way of life. Military service has an intrinsic value. It instills responsibility, dependability, and loyalty. You will cultivate your leadership skills, get to know yourself better, acquire strength and resiliency you never knew you had, and above all, you will build a strong character. Parents, you're the real ones, and family members, thank you for trusting us to take care of your loved ones. We know it's hard to let them go into a career that may put them in harm's way. Thank you for your love and support because it means the world to them. We wouldn't be here tonight without the City of Burnsville, which became a Yellow Ribbon City in 2013. And we appreciate the help and support of the city to make sure Burnsville Yellow Ribbons' mission is carried out for veterans, military members, and their families before, during, and after deployments. And I'd like to thank the many organizations in the audience tonight, the Burnsville VFW, Commander Bob is here, the Two Eagles Marine Detachment, and there you go, there you go, the Burnsville Savage Lions, I see Dave and Terry, Dakota County Vet Services. Where? Oh, there you go, okay. Recruiters from each of the branches of services, and leaders and elected representatives from the cities of Burnsville and Savage, and businesses in our community. They are an integral part of our Yellow Ribbon network and help us do our job. Now, let's get to the formal recognition. Tonight, we have a, a bag of fun items for each student, and inside you'll find a $50 gift card, not your parents', yours, and from Target, as a token of appreciation from your hometown community. Also, we're providing each student with a red, white, and blue honor cord to wear with your cap and gown on graduation. And Principal Jesus, they, I think it's Go, yep? At least Marsha told me it was, yeah. I will also be giving you a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon challenge coin when I shake your hand. A challenge coin is a small medallion, light coin adorned with the emblem or insignia of the presenting organization. The coins are a symbol of membership, belonging, and camaraderie. More importantly, the coins acknowledge your achievements, dedication, and exemplary service, and serve as a reminder to the appreciation and respect of your peers and superiors. It is a great honor that I am happy to bestow on you tonight when you come forward. Before we call your name, I'd like to call forward the Burnsville Mayor, which she's here, and the Savage Mayor, which CNN is here. Officer, yeah. Yep, and, okay, and to help distribute the bags, and VFW Commander Gunderson to help hand out the U.S. Flags donated by the Burnsville VFW. Please note, after we are finished here, everyone is invited to join us for refreshments and food in a meeting room on the lower level of the City Hall downstairs, it's already set up and is waiting for us. Students, I'll call your name, please come forward when I call your name, and stay in the middle here, up front, until everyone is called so that we can get a group picture. Oh, okay. All right. So the first one is Dane Heinem, Henem, Heinem? Okay.
How about if we have a line so the students know where they're going?
Yeah, start down there, and walk your way down this way.
Army.
Yeah, come this way, Dan. Yeah, it starts there, and then we'll send you to the middle with the gauntlet.
First of all, congratulations.
You're gonna pull everything from that, yeah, and take a shake down of it. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Yeah, we appreciate your, your choice.
And here's your coin.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so right over here. Start from over here, okay. All right, the U.S. Marine, he'll probably know, right? Logan, blowbomb.
Thank you so much for your commitment. We appreciate you.
Thank you for choosing to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next one, another Marine. Faith Naya Moita. Is that, is that how you say it?
Wait, she's a Marine?
Yes.
She chose a Marine.
The next one too.
Thank you, and good luck, and you're very brave.
Thank you for choosing to serve.
Yes. And yes, Mayor, another Marine. The backstory is her husband was a Marine, or is a Marine. Yakub Ismail?
All right, here you go. That's all right. And thank you for your commitment, we appreciate you.
Thank you for choosing to serve.
Thank you.
Yep, all right. Okay, so the Minnesota National Guard, Finley Went?
Yep, I got it down here. Thank you so much for your commitment, we appreciate you.
Thank you for choosing to serve. We appreciate you, thank you.
And you're going to boot camp right after graduation, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Okay, the next one is Ashley Gutierrez de Jesus. Minnesota National Guard.
Thank you for choosing to serve our country, thank you.
The next one, Jose Vanilla Hernandez.
Thank you for choosing to serve our country.
National Guard, Minnesota National Guard. And you two are going to boot camp right after graduation, aren't you? Yeah, he's going to boot camp too, right after graduation. Okay, Yolanda Prestigun Cutamara? Cutamara? Another National Guard. What are the National Guard, you guys are busy this year. Yeah, we've...
Thank you for your commitment, we appreciate you so much.
Thank you for choosing to serve our country.
And you go in June, don't you?
Yeah.
To boot camp. There you go. And I think the last one is Allison Stonker. Okay. Yes.
Thank you so much for your commitment, we appreciate you.
Thank you for choosing to serve our country. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And usually we have, it's been a while, but usually we have an Air Force, but Kara, I'm sorry.
So I, I just want to say, if you're thinking about Air Force, Air Force has the best food, number one. They get treated the best out of any in the military, number two. And number three, parents, they send their officers into battle rather than the enlisted, so if you know what I mean on that. And if anyone wants to hear about how fun it is to serve overseas in Spain, I will tell the kids that, but I will not tell the parents that.
There you go. Good, thanks. And they get to keep their hands in their pockets, Air Force.
Okay, so those are the students we have.
Those are the students we have. And so I think it's... Are we gonna go and take some pictures? Okay. Yeah, we can go downstairs.
And we will continue with our work.
Yes. Sure.
No, that's a flag. It's the flag.
Go Army.
Civilians in the house.
All right, we will now proceed with the business of the people. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience or anyone online to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form. council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We will move on. The next item is for emergency items only. And Mrs. Rhodey, our deputy city manager, CFO, are there any emergency items to come before us?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Members of the council? Okay, we will move on. The next item is the consent agenda. This is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online, ma'am.
Okay, members of the council, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. We will now go on to the regular item. And the first item on the agenda, this item of the agenda is for the City Council Security Briefing. And it is on the regular agenda, but I understand, Mrs. Rhodey, that staff is wanting to make an action.
Correct. Meta Mayor and Council, our trainer for this evening is ill and staff is requesting to continue this item to June 17th.
Okay. Members of the council, I need a motion to move this item to June 17th.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. And now, members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening and a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Good night and thank you for being with us.